Good evening. Today is 6th, it's Monday, April 24th, 2023, 6:30. And welcome to the Witten Woods City School Board of Education meeting. And it's called to order. Please silence your cell phones and then rise and stand as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
President.
This is Kim.
Present. Thank you. We're moving on to our Agenda Point 2.01, which is District Honors, Recognition, Gifts, and Introductions. And I did want to just make one comment about this because this is one of our favorite parts of the meeting. And basically, it's to go to uphold our mission, the Witten Woods City School mission, about to actively engage and challenge all learners to reach their maximum potential. And this is a great way to highlight that for our community, and that we can see that every day. But thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
All right. So, we're going to shift this around a little bit because we have some incredible young people that we like to recognize and get some pictures on the learning stairs so that we can just fulfill our responsibility. But I'd like to kind of tell you a little bit about what's happening with the ECA. The Witten Woods Board of Education would like to congratulate and recognize the following students who will be part of the first first. Can everybody say first?
First.
All right. First cohort to participate in Miami University's Early College Academy. And I'm going to tell you. So, I had the pleasure of going to a couple of showcases and workshops, and I met this incredible guy, Dr. Dourget. All right. We talked about this ECA, and he told me about some other schools that were part of it. I'm not going to mention those because this is all about Witten Woods tonight. But I want you to hear a few words, get a few, just to get a glimpse of what this guy is all about. I invited him to every event that I've invited him to at Witten Woods, he showed up. And he wanted to get a chance to see our young people up close and personal because superintendents brag about their schools and their district, but when you have the real deal and people really come to see it, then that's where you get the real opportunity to showcase who you are. So, Dr. Dourget.
I wanted to start out my thanking people. Smith, the board for having us here. And I met Superintendent Smith a little bit over a year ago. And so, I was new to my role at Miami University at the regional campus where I serve as Vice President indeed. And so, one of the big things we're focused on is how do we increase access to higher education? How do we increase that pipeline so more students can get higher education and be successful? One of the things that we deal with right now is there is an attack on college and the ROI or return on the value of college. I want to make sure you all know that college is as valuable as it ever has been. When you think about our students and when they take advantage of college, they earn more, they live longer, they have better jobs, they have better quality of life. And that's not Andy's perspective or Dr. Dourget's perspective. Those are facts. And so, when I talk to Superintendent Smith, and I said, "We want to find a way we can get students through the pipeline earlier and quicker." And so, we had a template or a model for our Early College Academy. And the first time I met him, he said, "How can we get involved in Witten Woods?" And so, what has been extremely encouraging is from the beginning, him and Principal Martin have been super strong allies, super strong partners and collaborators in how we bring this opportunity with Witten Woods. You mentioned this is going to be our fourth cohort, but what we want you all to know, this will not be our last cohort. We want this to be a steady pipeline so more students are graduating high school with an associate's degree. It's going to cost them nothing, and they can take that too. We would hope Miami University invests in the state, but any institution in the state. And so, what we're doing is we're giving these students a leg up. We're also attacking the affordability crisis we have in our education. We want to take away those barriers where people say, "We can't do college because of cost. We can't do college because of investment." We're taking that away. We're giving students the opportunity, and so, they are going to be able to start out further along their college pathway, but also further along in terms of their career. So, so excited, so excited to be able to come here and talk with you a little bit. Really excited about the partnership, and we look forward to engaging further in the future.
So, again, as I mentioned, meeting him, he's exciting, he's innovative, and he's personal because he cares about young people just like we do. But my goal is a little different than his. My goal is to have all of my students go through the program, all of my seniors at the same time. So, yeah, we'll see. This year, we have 312, so we're not going to pressure you right now, but we will be back. We will be back. All right. So, what we're going to do now is we're going to shift our program. We're going to move to the learning stairs so that the students can be properly recognized. But I'll tell you what, let's do something different. Who is going to be the speaker of the hour to recognize the students, each one by name? All right. So, what we'll do is we'll have, who else do I need? What we'll do, he'll call the names, and then we'll go out and get this photo op so that we can show the world of how we're growing expeditiously. So, here we go.
Do we want them to stand when I call their names?
Absolutely, we do.
If you're here, please stand.
We can give them.
Simran Achara.
Yeah.
Ariel Bowie.
To the podium?
Yes. I might hand your name so we can do this a little bit. I have certificate, so.
So, we want to use the podium because this is actually going to be broadcast through Waycross and CNN.
So. When I call their name, they should come up and get their certificate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if you're here, come get your certificate. Simran Achara, Ariel Bowie, Hannah Bowman.
Hey, a little slower. A little slower.
That's true. Aviance Bryant, Karen Cruz Aparicio, Ryan Davis. No, Ryan's here. Carlicia Davis, Abigail Evans, Edith Hernandez Morales, Brian Knighton, Josie Hervacio, Vanessa Byrd, Sydney Short, De'ara Castillo, Terry Trammell, Mamuna Traor, and Kalia Wilson.
Okay. Even though we don't have all of the students, we will actually come back in the weeks to come, months to come to recognize them appropriately. So, we do not have to move to the learning stairs because the group is small. And I'd like for the board members to come in for a photo opportunity. Doc, of course, and whoever you brought from Miami.
Well, you know what? Are you having trouble getting into the room? How many of you get in? I could beat us.
Who are the high school representatives? You come up?
Just go.
Absolutely. Anyone from Miami University?
Tyler, people in the back. Hey, how are you? Doing well, thank you. Okay, I'll be in the back. Tyler, please.
We're living down here. Okay, you can step up.
We should do a crosstalk.
Do you guys want to get these t-shirts out for help? Let's do an after.
All right, you're good.
Oh, what are you doing in the back? I'm sick. Like, I do.
Students, I also do have t-shirts for you guys. I can send them out. We can do a box meeting.
I need to get my password.
Yeah, I mean, my thing for board docs is just sort of just, I still haven't gotten into board docs.
Well, I hope I can get in because I don't have the different kind of thing.
I hope that the board docs charge my computer. And it's just like, and I just checked my internet. It's connected.
I wonder if we can ask Rhonda?
Maybe when we take a break, she's here, or she can look at it for us.
I just need the password to this account.
I was trying to check them off as he was calling them, but they weren't in the order that this was in, so yours was in this order probably. Okay. Because it's just like, I was looking, you know, like, okay, I was asking what it is.
Strategic marketing.
Right. Uh-huh. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four. I am with the five people I know. I'm going to get this job.
So, I know that Principal Martin's going to do something special for all of the recipients this week, so make sure you keep your shirts handy. All right. Thank you.
I can't even see the leader.
I can't get the leader.
The next part of our program is we recognize our community spirit. Community spirit, guys, having trouble. Officer Harris.
Officer Harris.
You're up next, sir. Thank you. All right. So, the next part of our program is we recognize our Community Spirit Award recipients, and Officer Harris has been an incredible resource officer. I know that across the country, people, you know, have this conversation or this conflict about, shoot, we have officers in the school. And I can tell you, if there are officers like him, you would want them in your school. He is absolutely wonderful. He is dynamic. He cares about young people, and he makes our lives a lot easier to bear. Officer Harris has been with us for how long?
08, 09. First school year.
All right. Fantastic. Fantastic. Wonderful addition to our program, but we need other officers like him. He's a one-man show right now, and I think that can be very stressful because he has a family. He needs to take vacations every now and then. And so, I think it's a tribute to his work. I think it's a testament to everything that he does. He's committed to everything that we do in our district. And I know he believes that all these people came for him, but they came for the kids. So, he just happened to come the right day. But Officer Harris, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of the city of Forest Park, I just want to say it's been a real fun ride. Initially, I wanted to come in and do four years, just, you know, eight through 12, nine through 12, and then it turned into a career. And you start meeting so many good kids, and now I've got little brothers, little sisters, and stuff like that coming in. I'm going to places out in the city, out and about, and you see people that you used to have at school, and they just, it's fun. It's fun to watch. So, I plan on doing it a few more years. I got a little time left, so we're going to make this happen and do some good things.
So, we're used to numeric values in the district, so can you give us an exact number, like 10 years, 15?
I'm thinking more like two.
Numbers are vastly different. All right. Very good. So, who did you bring with you tonight?
Me, myself, and I. Everybody's in school in my house. My wife's in nursing school. I'm back in school, and my daughters are both in school, and one's at Miami and one's at Wright State.
Okay. So, this is what we're going to do. We create our own photos. So, for students that are still here, come on, get in a photo with him so at least they show that we love.
Thank you.
I didn't say you have to love him, you have to just act like you do.
One, two, three.
Officer Harris, I expect to see this picture on your wall in your office at some point in time, sir.
Yeah, on Facebook, it might have ours.
That's how it works.
Look at faces.
Okay. Is Melanie here tonight for the character of its key award for the primary school? Yes, I knew that was you. So, I'm going to read a little bit about Ms. Ramirez, but this is written by her principal, Ms. Plummer. Over the years, we've watched Melanie Nicole Ramirez grow into a hardworking, intelligent young lady. Melanie has shown integrity by being honest with herself and classmates. She is a dependable student that her teacher can call on to complete different tasks or answer tough questions. She also shows good judgment by doing the right thing when she believes no one is watching. See, that's key, when no one's watching. Usually, when people are watching, we do the right thing. But how many of you do the right thing when no one's watching? Okay, two hands. That's what I thought. All right. One of her major accomplishments was achieving her goal of meeting her reading level. Not only does she have a passion for reading, but she loves working with others and helping friends in need. Melanie will go far and do well, not only academically, but in life. She is very outgoing and has a witty sense of humor. We are very proud to call her a warrior. So, I know, you know, when you have great kids, there are some great parents connected to them. So, great parents, come on up for a photo opportunity. Come on.
Get in a picture, Ms. Co. Paulie, you're going to get on one side or the other. There you go. There you go.
Next recipient, TJ Buckman. TJ, come on. Okay, we'll catch up with him. Skyline athlete, he is the Skyline Athlete of the Month. Skyline Teacher of the Month is Mr. Robert Young. Come on up, sir. You know, when I met Mr. Young at the beginning of the year as one of the teachers coming in, you know what he said? He says, "I'm going to get that award." And look, he did.
Good for you.
I'll read a little bit about Mr. Young. So, Mr. Day, this is what Mr. Day says about his incredible teacher, and it's pronounced "Young," so just wanted to let you know. We're thrilled to recommend Mr. Robert Young as the Intermediate Schools Teacher of the Month. Mr. Young is in his first year. Everybody say first year.
First year.
Teaching with us at Witten Woods, and he has been nothing but fantastic for our staff and students. His positive attitude and energy are contagious within his classroom, and he has been able to feel, build strong relationships and rapport with his students. From the start, Mr. Young has been collaborative with all of his colleagues and has shown great flexibility this year. Having observed his class in action, we have witnessed Mr. Young jump right into project-based learning with students, providing engaging, authentic projects which tested the students' ability to work collaboratively as they created and tested a bridge. It was incredible to see the kids so engaged in such a hands-on project. We are very fortunate to have Mr. Young with us at the intermediate school, and we're most excited to see him grow and excel at Witten Woods for the next 30 years.
30 years. Gotcha.
All right. So, there has to be someone who created you.
Yes.
All right. Are the creators in the room?
I did not think anyone was coming, but my pops actually.
There he is.
Popped in in the back.
Come on up. You look good, sir. Come on. Come on. And you know, it's about time. Usually, we get the mom deal. We got a dad. So, let's give, there we go. There we go. Oh, bring the sister. Where is she? Come on up. This is a family affair.
I didn't know this was happening.
Come on. Where's your sister?
First, thank you, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Day for giving the opportunity to work here. I never thought I'd be a teacher. I went into sales out of college, and I went back to school. It was kind of a risk, but having worked at this school for this year with my sixth grade students, I can definitely say it was one of the better decisions I made in my life. The kids probably teach me more than I teach them, but I'm grateful for the award and I'm grateful to work here with the kids. So, I appreciate you guys, and thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Young, what's your sister's name?
Abby, Abby Wells. She's also a teacher.
Abby. Abby. You'll be able to do something very historic. Your baby was at his event. All right. There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
We make moments. We make memories all the time. That's what we do. So, the next one is, let me see. Northwood Grumman. Anyone here? We may have to send you on a mission, Mr. Denny, to deliver that to their place of business because they are great, great supporters of our work all of the time and keep us engaged with everything that we're doing. I think their insight to what happens with young people, they don't leave young people behind because technology moves, innovative ideas come and go, and Northwood Grumman is always right there at the forefront. So, there we go. So, we appreciate them. Yes. A $2,000 commitment to our work. Ms. Knighton, where's your daughter? I don't see her. Okay. You know, I have to apologize to you before we move on. I know you wanted that Miami deal, but your little brother got it. So, there we go. All right. He was in the right place at the right time, dear. That's how it works. All right. Ms. Co, that's it. I don't know if you really felt the passion and the work from Dr. Dourget, but think about it, the young people that were recipients tonight of these, the Early College Academy, will actually earn an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time. All right.
Thank you, Super.
Not every district can do that. Not every district can brag about that. So, this is, you know, a very innovative concept, and when they walk across the stage in two years, having both of those things together, that will be absolutely powerful.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Congratulations to all of our recipients. Again, this is one of the boards, I have to speak for my board, but I think we enjoy this tremendously because it is an effort of the work of our district to highlight and to bring out the best in our students and to be able to give them opportunities to grow and learn. So, thank you.
We forgot one person.
Yeah.
So, you were one of our recipients before, correct, Ms. Jordan? Okay, and we didn't get a chance to properly recognize you. So, tell a little bit about who you are and what you do. Okay? And what makes you exciting?
I guess I'm in band, and I've seen Anthony Smith before. Do I just tell my life story?
Just tell. I think the part where you saw, you say you see Anthony Smith, that was good enough, but just do a little bit more. Just a little bit.
I'm 15. I'm in, I think I'm in all honors classes.
You are.
I have two siblings. I have a mom and dad. I have two dogs. I have six chickens.
So, she's an actual high achiever, and we did not get to properly recognize her last month, so we wanted her to come up. And thank you for everything you do. Thank you for being in the band. Thank you for being able to play the flute and march the chickens all around. All right? So, they stay in line. I think that helps. But I think that your insight to school and your attitude about school is absolutely remarkable, so we did not want to miss you. So, everybody, a round of applause, please. Who did you bring tonight?
My mom and my siblings.
Let them, let's get a photo shoot. Mom and siblings.
All right. Thank you again, and again, congratulations to all of our recipients, our teachers, our students, our security, our SRO. All of these things are really, really important for our students to do well. So, thank you again so much. We will take a five-minute break, a little intermission, and then we'll resume back in a few moments. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're back to our Agenda 4.01. That's okay. The public comments. We do have one public comment this evening. They will have three minutes to address the board. Janetta Thomas. Thank you.
My name's Janetta Thomas. I have two students who attend the district here. My oldest daughter is in eighth grade, 14 years old. She's been involved in plenty of sports activities, clubs throughout the district. My youngest daughter, Arielle, is six. She's been in the district since kindergarten, and she has Down Syndrome. So, I'm here on behalf of her just because we've had two totally different experiences within the district. For my oldest daughter, typically developing, like I said, she's involved in activities and all. But for Ari, I've really had to advocate for what it is that she participates in. So, as the board, I'm just coming to you all to request that we are more directive in the media, newsletters, outlooks, whatever information that's sent out, to highlight children with special needs and disabilities in that information. Also, when working with, you know, activities and extracurriculars, have it as an option that we do more directed reach out to the parents. I know the website says there are over 700 children with an IEP or a 504 within the district, but a lot of times, you don't see them. It seems like, you know, we're pushed aside, and unless you have a parent or family or someone who's really advocating, you just don't see them. So, I would ask that you guys kind of look to that, also updating website materials, information that goes out. And then I can get with you all. I have several ideas, you know, back-to-school events, things that we can do, more directed activities to children with disabilities, because I really just want my daughter to be able to have the same experiences as her sister, and as of right now, she hasn't got that. So, I'm really split on my support for the district because, you know, I have the one who's doing everything, straight A's and involved, and then I really have to push for everything else for Ari. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda 5.01, the Witten Woods Teachers Association. Do we have a representative? No. Move on to our Ohio Association of Public School Employees. Oopsie. We have two.
Good evening, Madam Board President, Superintendent Smith, board members, community members. I just wanted to acknowledge our secretary, Mr. Bruce Hodge, here tonight with me just as support, and we just want and we just want to say thank you, and congratulations to all of our students, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda six point zero one, the Approval of Minutes. It's from two thousand, or two twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, and three thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Board, if there would be a, a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any conversation or, or comments?
Um, Madam President, I would just like to observe that I missed one of the meetings, so I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, Dr. Johnson will be abstaining, um, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Motion passes three, or, excuse me, yeah, three, and then one abstention. Moving on to Treasurer's Report, um, Mr. Seymour, um, would you like to present the financial statements for March two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, uh, the year-to-date revenues for the general fund are at forty-four point nine million. Uh, for the month of March, we received three point eight million, mostly from the state foundation and our real estate final settlement. Our expenditures for the general fund for the year-to-date are thirty-nine point two million, and we are currently running approximately four percent under budget, or approximately two point three million under budget. The final page that you have for you, page five, shares with you all the, uh, activity within the funds, and shows that as of March thirty-first, from all funds, we had twenty-four point four million unencumbered fund balance.
Thank you, um, if there are no objections from the board, uh, let the financial statements for the month of March two thousand twenty-three be submitted for audit. Moving on to Treasurer's Recommendations, uh, Mr. Seymour?
Yes, for the month of March, we had approximately thirty million dollars invested, and in, for the month of March, we earned one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars in interest, of which ninety-three thousand went to the general fund, and twenty thousand for our building project. And our interest rates, uh, range from point five to five point one four currently at Star Ohio.
That's good, um, Board, there would be a motion on the, or needed?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, um, any conversation, questions, discussion?
Question, Mr. Seymour, is the interest rate for Star Ohio, is that an increase from?
Last month, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing them, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye, motion passes four, uh, unanimously. Moving on to reports from the Superintendent. Nine point zero one, Mr. Smith, you have the floor?
Yes, Madam President and Board, we have an exciting, um, presentation from, um, Mr. Jacob, Jacob Schaffner and Ms. Deb Brookbank, um, and they'll be talking about the Pollination Garden, their community project-based learning project.
Good evening.
So, guys, so, John, this is kind of the designs that we have kind of laid out for, uh, our pollinator garden we have going on at the high school.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to pull the podium out a little bit, you think, can you see the screen? Yeah, I was gonna say, if we cross can see it.
Oh, he said he's good.
Is it good, okay.
So we're building a garden.
Cool.
You ready? So, um, it started out with Jake and I, um, I teach the ELL, Environmental Science classes, my name is actually, um, Deb Sutorius Anderson, Brookbank's my stage name. And Jake is my ELL tutor, or, in the room.
Yeah, I'm Jacob Schaffer, and I'm an ESL tutor within the district, and I help out on her ELL, Environmental Science class.
So one day we decided to show them a movie that he had seen in college, and it's a, um, it's in Spanish with English subtitles, and it has to do with the Great Monarch Migration. I don't know if you know, but every year the monarchs migrate from Canada all the way down to Mexico, and they come through this area, um, and they, uh, when they get to Mexico, um, it's part of the Day of Dead Celebration.
Yeah, so basically, kind of, the Day of the Dead Celebration, they kind of honor, you know, uh, those who have passed on in Mexico, it's a Mexican tradition, and a lot of times, like, it kind of syncs up with the monarch butterfly migration, so the monarch butterflies kind of getting down there, kind of symbolize their, the, the passed on, their loved ones, they're coming back, the spirits are coming back, so it, it kind of symbolizes that, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of celebration that goes along with it, um, so we started to talk about that kind of being something that we could incorporate multicultural-y into our science classroom. Um, but then, uh, the monarchs are also, um, uh, endangered now, they, monarchs need milkweed, um, actually to reproduce, they can get nectar from a lot of different plants, but the milkweed has a chemical that makes the caterpillars toxic to predators, so they have to have the milkweed to survive, but milkweed needs open spaces to grow, and with urban sprawl, um, there's not a lot of milkweed left, so the monarchs have become endangered, they were just added to the IUCN, um, Red List last year. Um, so that was kind of the, the first step, um, with us saying, well, you know, maybe we should, we should start a garden, but then, um, there are, for the monarchs, you know, just a monarch garden, but then, um, there are a lot of other pollinators that are also endangered for the same reasons, so, um, pollinators are really important to our food supply, um, and it's, it is an issue. Um, they are, uh, maybe in a little bit of trouble, so if, if, uh, deforestation and loss of habitat is the problem, then the solution is to provide more habitat for them, so that was our idea, to be a part of that, and it, um, it kind of, it started to grow. Um, we aren't gardeners, uh, we know a little bit, but not a lot, so we, we started to, um, talk to our colleagues about it, and we found other people that were interested in it, um, that's myself and Jake, um, Brad, Samina Wazalowski is our Science Department Chair, and he's also, he runs PECAP classes, physics classes, loves to build, as does Charlie Corrick, um, so we were going, they want to put a pergola in with solar cells on the top for solar energy, um, and we've got boardwalks and stone walkways and concrete that we're talking about, so they're really into that, and then we have Josh, Josh Obstutz, who is the Math Department Chair, um, uh, he's, he's into the building, but he also kind of likes the planning aspect, um, and he has, um, a lot of math that he can incorporate into that project. And then we have Carol Becky Youngs, of course, Fine Arts, uh, for the garden design, wants to do a Fine Arts garden there, um, and Jacob wants to do a multicultural garden as well, he wants to bring in plants from all the different countries that our students come from. Um, I'm doing pollinator gardens in, for the Environmental Science classes. Um, and then we have Carolyn Smith, she's new, she's a new biology teacher, and she wants to start a garden club. Um, she's talking about even putting a beehive in, so that's kind of exciting. Maybe scary, um, so Jake and I kind of started to just branch out and learn a little bit, um, we went to, well, first, um, Ray Gwynn, of course, Park Environmental, he's here, um, I met with him, and he's just a wealth of resources.
Yeah, he allocated us the area that we're actually building the garden in, so.
Got us in touch with, uh, Carol Lundey, he's a great naturalist. Um, we went to a Cincinnati Zoo Symposium, um, Jake and I did, and we threw that, uh, met a lot of, is that, is that where you met Kevin, Kevin, Derek, was that, you didn't come in through the symposium?
It was something, yeah, yeah, through the symposium.
Kevin Odell is a, a horticulturalist that we're working with as well, he's worked on other projects, um, one that we're gonna talk about here a little later, um, the Kansas Biological Survey, Center for Ecological Research puts out, puts out the Monarch Watch Program, which my classes will be a part of, um, citizen science, and, um, the National Wildlife Federation has the, um, has another, has a whole curriculum based around, uh, school gardens, so, um, and then I did apply for the WWV grant, EF grant, so that's kind of where we're looking for support right now. Um, school pollinator gardens are starting to become popular, we're noticing that there are a lot of them at the elementary level and not so many at the high school level, so this is kind of, kind of something different. This is Rockdale, and Kevin, this is what, you're familiar with Rockdale?
Yeah, very familiar, that's a project, the, uh, zoo was, Botanical Garden and Zoo was invited to participate with Rockdale School, which you've seen there, that's about a two-acre site, that's the old Rockdale Academy, was right there. That was rebuilt right, uh, to the east of there, and they had a, just a big, open, green lawn on terrible, terrible soil, well, the zoo is just a block and a half away from there.
Right.
So they approached the zoo about what can we do with this?
It was pretty powerful.
Well, the ideas got rolling, and I've been lucky to be involved in a lot of volunteers groups the last fifty-five years I've been in horticulture, and learned a lot in schools like that too, by the way. And that's the most exciting thing I've ever been involved in, you know, and how the creation of that garden and the public support that Steve Foltz, who was also talking to you.
Yeah, I talked to him.
About, it was just a fantastic experience. That garden went from a drawing on a napkin to fruition in eight months. Uh, tremendous support from the foundation. The Children's Hospital was up on, above there, so they're looking down on that garden, it was designed like that, outdoor theater, teaching area, greenhouses were donated, it's solar work in there, it's just amazing what they're doing, they're, the students from Rockdale have a course to run through there, where they're participative, that whole space, and they even have, to include their, like, young lady that was here before, they have a special, um, autistic class there. Those children are involved in this process also.
Yeah.
And, I mean, Children's Hospital had two hundred volunteers every day just planning, it was absolutely amazing how that garden was built. Some of the trees were repurposed from the zoo, where they were building the elephant, the elephant exhibit, some large trees were coming in, they had so much support from so many community people there. It's just, you know, national plant people, national introductions, this is a trial garden for these very large growers around the country that Steve Foltz has pulled together on there. It's a wonderful opportunity, if they get a chance to visit, he's more than welcome to give tools, but, you know, when, when kids are eating a raspberry that they grew, they didn't know what rasp, what raspberries were, they were picking them out of that garden, strawberries, pawpaw trees, you know, and, and I've been there for different events on the board, the Zoo Horticultural Committee at the zoo, and just seeing those young people out there lighting up, being around something that, different environment, you know, in Avondale there, worth Avondale, it's an amazing project, you're gonna be able to do something on that scale.
So knowing that we are a project-based learning district, um, this really falls right in line of what we do and, and how we do it, um, the collaboration between Children's Hospital, uh, the Cincinnati Zoo, and Rockdale, I think that's powerful, because the close proximity made it a fit, a total fit, uh, I'm excited about what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Especially because I think the part that you mentioned, it's usually in an elementary setting, but moving this to a high school opportunity, maybe some kid decides to, I'll go, want to go into this whole idea of horticulture. Yes, absolutely, the more they see, the more they do.
This is our area, real quick, these are the tennis courts, um, over by the senior center, um, that's the community building, here's our school, don't look at the teacher parking, but that, it's, uh, it's actually the shape of a ball field.
It's not quite two acres worth of property that Rockdale has, but it's, like, it's all, like, what is it, nine thousand?
For your input.
That's a look at it, we were.
Yeah, this is, this is just like, uh, uh, video of this, the area that we're working with. Right here kind of starts the open grassy area where the garden will go, right here.
It's huge.
Wow.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a nice little area, it'll be cool to like, have people, you know, watching the tennis game, whatever, matches, whatever, so.
We had a student design contest, and Jake took some of their ideas, and he put it in, that's our final new.
Yeah, that's kind of what we've drawn up here, so I thought it was really cool, one of our students came up with this, like, design, it looked like a figure eight to me, and she goes, Wenton Woods, and so like, I thought it was cool that she had like, something representing the walkway, so through that, I kind of, our kind of foundation on this garden came from the butterfly, so I thought it'd be kind of cool to kind of design the walkway, kind of like a butterfly wing, so that's what we had in there. And then, uh, so we have the pergola and a fountain kind of in a central location there, the, uh, yeah, so the fountain in, probably, I'd say about all of our kids' designs, they had some sort of fountain, whatever the reasoning was, they had it in there, so I figured it'd be kind of cool to drop one in there, so, yeah.
So, there it is.
Yeah, this is what we hope to have our final kind of garden look like, you know?
Excuse me, can I interject?
Yes, please.
The space they have, you all have, just a very exclusive space over there, there's gardens there now that I assume are being, we assume are being taken care of by the senior center, they need to be maintained a little bit more, but that would tie into that, the kids being there with the seniors helping.
Powerful piece, yeah, absolutely.
There's a woodland out there, a very clean-looking woodland, so you've got the large trees out there, that it was shown on one of those videos, but then you have that little creek running through there, and, uh, it has one block, you know, just tying into this natural area, there's a, down middle, all blocks up, there's a very, environmentally, there's a very nice space there, that would perfect this, because you've got some building blocks with the woods, with the creek running.
And then the playground too, so you've got a playground up there too.
There's, there's, there's a great use of that unused space, it's just momentary.
So I know that, uh, Ms. Jackson's eager to do a story, uh, we've been talking about it for a little bit, and once we heard about it, we were excited, but I'd like to, uh, push the, the envelope back to the board. The board has kind of challenged me, okay, Superintendent, we hear about great things that are happening in schools, but we never get to see them on air or waycross, so bringing them to board meetings will get some of our young people involved, so thank you very, very much, a very, very powerful piece, yes.
Very good.
Excellent.
So each day. So, when, when I, when I go home, Ms. Kuhn, I, I gotta tell you, um, there's a neighbor across the street, you know, everybody has that neighbor that has that exquisite garden, right? And, um, so I keep trying to battle him out, and every time I come home from late board meetings, uh, he's always there, you know, planting more flowers, so I have to challenge each morning, so, hey, we'll see how this turns out, maybe I'll get into the, the newspaper, so.
I did have one question, so, um, where will your, uh, flowers come from? Are they gonna be donated, or how, how are you gonna supply the area?
Yeah, so, I got, when I was talking to Stevens, like, I guess a lot of, uh, well, he said that from the zoo, they have a lot of extra plants that they need to go somewhere, you know, they might be old or something, so they could transfer that over here.
Huge.
And really, it's kind of like reaching out to local nurseries, asking them, you know, can you donate whatever here? And as far as how to get the plants that, well, I had that idea from, like, different cultures and different countries, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but, yeah, yeah, we have, we're reaching out, we're trying to find, figure it out.
Because you're gonna have lighting and all of that going on in there too, right? So, all of that's gonna, you're gonna look to partner with some different organizations to, I think that's wonderful.
Hey, Ms. Jackson, uh, do you mind getting a picture of all the people involved in it, so we can see how this thing started? Forest Park does have a garden club, too, I don't know if you guys.
I was gonna say, thank you, I was gonna say, did you reach out to them?
Photo opportunity.
They weren't together anymore.
Okay.
If they exist, we'd like to know.
On their website, there's a contact person, so if you would, uh, reach out, I think that'd be a great collaboration. On their website, there's a contact person, so if you would, uh, reach out, I think that'd be a great collaboration.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yes, you guys, all you guys get in a picture. We wanna commemorate this for sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Columbus, City of Columbus has a great community garden program, and they have a lot of multicultural people there, so they're all sharing. What they're doing with their gardens, with their neighbors and things, and they may be willing to share.
Oh, yeah, no problem, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. Is there any other kind of questions about the?
Um, do you have a timeframe when you'll get started, or what, how, what do you have in mind?
So really, we kinda wanted to phase it into like little phases, so like the bottom part right here, we kinda wanted to make that into kinda like a phase one to have this kinda ready for our like learning and for next fall. So that was kind of our phase one, and then kinda move backwards from there and just kinda complete everything. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So.
No, that's exciting. And I love the way that you incorporated, um, the educational piece into the actual, the gardening, so there's a therapeutic, uh, feeling to that. There is a, a good feeling you get from accomplishing either building something or growing something that you can't replicate, um.
Hands in the dirt is always fun.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you. That's really exciting.
I'm not a good gardener, but I try every year. I do. I, I try every year. I spend a lot of money on flowers to try to, I do.
And wanna make sure that whatever space, for whatever age group, that we make it accessible to all learners, which is part of our vision and mission here in the district. So thank you guys, this is exciting. I love to garden. I was in, out of town last week and I was just telling Mr. Birdie that there was a gardening club there at the hotel. So I'm surrounded by all of these men and women and they had the flowers and they were talking. I thought this is gonna be my future. I'm gonna be one of these people traveling for gardening clubs. So this is apropos that you all are talking about gardening. If you need help, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, I know, I love it, I, yes.
You have to be careful, horticulture is an addiction.
It is, it is.
Well, I would invite you to keep us abreast of what's going on and keep us informed and, um, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on to nine point zero one, the first read of our seven revised policies. Superintendent Smith?
You said nine point zero one?
Nine point zero two, my, my, my bad.
Yeah, nine point zero two. So these are all, um, first reads. And the policy numbers for these are, uh, policy zero one three one point one, bylaws, technical corrections. Policy sixteen fifteen, administration tobacco use prevention. Twenty-one fourteen, meeting state performance indicators. Twenty-one fourteen, twenty-four twelve, excuse me, homebound instruction program. Thirty-two fifteen, professional staff tobacco use prevention. Forty-two fifteen, tobacco use prevention as classified staff. And finally, fifty-four sixty, graduation requirements.
Okay. So this is our first read, so obviously we won't vote on that right now, but that would be the next meeting.
Yeah, the, uh, expectation is to, um, make the recommendations and to vote on these policies, uh, for the May board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to nine point zero three, which is facilities updates.
With the nine point zero three, we're gonna actually combine nine point zero three with, um, ten point zero six and ten point zero seven, where Mr. Denny has the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Again, I'm following these super exciting, wonderful projects, um, but. We put you there for a reason. Yeah, a lot to live up to. But, uh, happy to share an update on our facilities master plan for the district for this month. Uh, we, uh, are seeing some really nice visible progress at the renovation site, the early childhood center, uh, or the future early childhood central campus. Uh, we've got, uh, some window frames going in now, windows, storefront system, um, replacement of exterior doors and door frames. So, um, lets a lot more natural light in, uh, far more insulative than anything we had from the original construction. And really just looks really, uh, very nice as well and matches the new building. So again, trying to create the same experience for our youngest warriors and staff as we're creating in, uh, the building in which we currently find ourselves able to enjoy this evening. Um, so a nice update there. Um, we are approximately sixty-one percent complete, uh, in phase one by billing. So we're approaching, uh, what, uh, two-thirds mark and well over the halfway mark. Um, substantial completion date for this phase is December eleventh. Uh, switch gear's still on the way. That's the major, the major sticking point, and it's, it's true for projects all over the nation.
Thing is, Brian's about to build one.
Can I get a printer?
Yeah, can we three D print this? Yeah, it'd be lucrative at this point. Um, and I'll, I'll also share, uh, board, that we received some suggestions on how to better communicate with families, and one of the things someone hearkened back to was, we used to do updates, uh, during the master plan portion of where the new construction was going on, and could we possibly do something like that? So I talked to Mr. Smith and, uh, Ms. Jackson was kind enough to, to lean into that. And so we've basically just, it's a start. We created a new site, and it's on the business office page, which is on our district's website. If you go to our district's website, and for folks at home, that's www.wintenwoods.org. Um, navigate to services and then business office, um, you can then find, find updates. So there's a couple of plan documents there, so people who are interested, staff, students, community members, can take a look at what the plans are. We'll just continue to add to that and make it a, just a repository of information about the future early childhood campus, so. Appreciated the suggestion and the chance to bring that back to life. That concludes the update. I'm not sure if there's any questions on that portion, facility update.
No, I appreciate the idea to put, put it on the website and to have pictures, cause I did enjoy seeing the progress of the, of the new buildings. Um, so I think that'd be, that'd be fun and exciting to see. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Where is it that we'll find it? Cause I guess she's founded already and I can't.
She's got two documents up there. One was a community meeting we had last summer on the design. And the other was a presentation to the building's BLT.
What folder is all new campus construction, or what's, what folder?
Drew, do you wanna show them how to navigate?
Oh, early childhood renovation, is that where you're at? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I already found it then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so these are some renderings.
Okay.
The board's seen these, I believe. We covered this a few months back.
Yeah, yeah, mhm.
I'm gonna tell you what makes it exciting. When you, when you see the renderings and then the project actually turns out that way, that makes it very exciting.
I'm, I'm looking forward to when we get a, a tour, you know, like when it gets to the point where you can like walk us through, I think it's gonna, cause I remember what it used to look like.
Yes, yes.
So like kinda the before and after, you know, it's like.
Yeah, we, we have some photos too that have documented.
Yeah, oh yeah, so the juxtaposition's gonna be exciting to see.
Hopefully, you can put those side by side.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, it shows how much different it is, modernization, so it just creates a much better environment for the kids and staff. Okay, great. So that concludes the facilities report portion. This is very similar and related to it. Uh, the next items Mr. Smith referenced would be the change order review. And, uh, so board, you would have before you, um, the change order from Mark Spalding Construction Company, the firm that was awarded the bid um, for the renovation of the intermediate school. And this particular change order, um, I'll say this a couple of different times because it's important, um, especially as we tighten our belts financially as a district. Uh, this is not funded to, from the general fund. This is through the food service fund. And some people may say, well, don't they need funding too? And the answer is absolutely yes, but there's also requirements and restrictions that you're only allowed to carry so much of a balance. Um, and, and that's, you know, it becomes the obligation of the food service department to invest from time to time, to, um, create improvements. And so this is one of those situations. That building was built in nineteen sixty-eight. It did not have a dishwasher for the food service area. Uh, it does not have a grease interceptor, a grease trap. It does not have a modern hood system. It has a hood system, but it doesn't have fire suppression. So these are all items that are gonna be remedied, many of which through this change order, at least create the infrastructure necessary to install those pieces of equipment. So.
But Mr. Denny, uh, based on new building terms, these wouldn't even meet standards.
Oh, no, yeah, right, great point. Uh, the, the existing equipment is.
Absolutely.
It was state of the art in nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, it's not state of the art in two thousand twenty-three. Um, so yeah, the, the improvement will be radical and will greatly improve the capacity of that kitchen to act as a, uh, commissary, which is what the vision for it is, that it can serve not only the students and staff at that building, which will number, depending on enrollment, as much as five hundred students and, you know, sixty staff.
Overheard Dr. Johnson say, "I was state of the art in sixty-eight," but that's okay. That's all right.
That was Mr. Birdie, but I didn't really.
It's all right, it's all right, it's okay.
I did not need to set that up, I promise.
I heard it too.
Live the dream, live the dream, Doc.
I agree with it, at any rate.
So, so just so we know, we're at, uh, agenda ten point zero seven, which is the change order for the kitchen, um, alterations. And this is at the early community, um, center. Just so we kinda recap there. Uh, before we go any further, uh, there would be a need for a motion, uh, then we can ask some other questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order, COR dash oh one two, kitchen alterations as presented.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any, uh, questions, um, comments?
I think it's a very fortunate situation that, uh, the food service is actually, you know, taking care of this payment and not general fund.
Right, and the upgrade needed to be done, so it's good timing. The building's going under reconstruction or renovation. So it makes perfect sense to do it at the same time.
Absolutely.
So that we don't displace students or anything. And thank you very much. So any other comments from the board? Uh, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Vote passes unanimously. And then you wanna move to, um, agenda ten point zero six, which is the master marketing agreement.
Arcadia.
Arcadia.
Yes, thank, thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Uh, what I'd like to do is just review some high points of the agreement. And then happy to entertain questions if you might have any questions. So the mar, master marketing agreement, it would be between, uh, Wenton Woods City School District and Arcadia Infrastructure, which is a company that invests in wireless communications infrastructure. So opportunity for the, the board and the district to earn added revenue. This is not new to the district. We actually have a cell tower in our district now. It's located at the bus garage facility in Springfield Township. And I forget the exact year, but it was the mid-two thousands that went in. Um, so this would be, in, in essence, authorizing the company to survey, conduct surveys and tests to see if there are suitable sites to build one or more of those. And again, the win for the district is the opportunity to earn added income as well as, um, host our own radio services on the tower. The district currently pays Mobecom in Green Hills on Sharon Road to host our radio system that communicates with our buses, our emergency channels. Uh, we have three frequencies, three call signs, um, forty buses all have radios and, and this, so that's something we actually lease, you know. This, so this, this could potentially remove cost as well as adding, um, income. Uh, this agreement is, is in essence, four agreements in one, if I can review them briefly. The first, and it's the only one that, uh, would, would be requested to be reviewed and approved. The others are simply provided as exhibits. But the first agreement is the master marketing agreement, which again would provide Arcadia with the exclusive right to market properties um, for the purpose of constructing one or more monopole towers and subleasing the ground space. So the board, you wouldn't be selling property, it's just granting an easement for them to operate on. So there's the master marketing agreement that would be, or request your review and, uh, favorable approval if possible this evening. Exhibit B is an option and lease agreement. That exhibit is not activated until such time as the master marketing agreement's approved and they actually find a carrier interested in being located somewhere within, uh, our, our community at one of our sites.
So Mr. Denny, so let's say the, the tower is erected, right?
Yes.
And other carriers wanna launch on or get on the tower. Is that additional revenue for the district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I'll, I'll touch on a financial example, Mr. Smith, thank you, that was shared with the district in just a moment. Um, so that exhibit B wouldn't be requested to be approved until such time as there's a carrier interested in essence. And then they would look at constructing a tower and then they were, and I don't know what their magic number is, whether they do it for one carrier or they need to have more than one. There are four major carriers in the U.S. All of them are on the tower already existing on, at the bus garage facility. Um, there's also several dozen regional smaller carriers. Um, so that, so that the pool is potentially large. Exhibit D is not applicable to our district more than likely. It's just included as a reference again to the document. That is if a lender's involved. And this, the district does not have any mortgages. We own all of our properties outright, as is required by Ohio Revised Code, so that wouldn't apply to us. And then finally, there's exhibit E, which is a memo of option and lease, and that is to document, I believe, with the county recorder and auditor's office once these documents were to be, were to be executed. So anytime there's an easement granted, uh, that has to be recorded, uh, with the lien, as a potential lien on the property or, or a, a easement on the property, excuse me. Um, so what, the term would be five years, by the way, for the marketing agreement. If they don't find anyone interested within five years, this, uh, agreement becomes null and void. Uh, this involves no financial, uh, input by the district. Here's a financial example. The, the numbers shared with the district, uh, when we engaged with the company early on was a monthly lease is approximately twenty-two fifty, two thousand two hundred fifty per month. Uh, the district shared, this is a seventy-five twenty-five split, uh, where the district would earn twenty-five percent of the rental or lease income from the carriers. So that would be five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Annualized, that's a little under seven thousand per year, per carrier, per tower. So then that, per year. So over thirty years with a two percent price escalator, that comes out to about two hundred and seventy-three thousand over thirty years. And that's for one carrier on one tower, so multiply that by X number. It's hard to project, but that's the potential revenue stream that the district could realize. So if you get all four carriers, then you're looking at twenty-eight thousand a year. Yeah, so.
Over thirty.
Over thirty.
One, one question. Uh, on the, on number eleven in the insurance section.
Yes, sir.
So if they're saying that it's a possibility of more than one tower, is that separate insurance for each tower?
Probably not, since the, Arcadia is the liability, would, would carry the liability insurance.
All right, even if they're not in the same location?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And because they wouldn't have the same carrier, uh, we have the same carrier for all eleven of our sites. If they change carriers, they're required in the agreement to notify us that they've changed carriers or coverages or things of that nature.
Then one additional question. When a new carrier, uh, joins the tower, what's the timeframe for allow, letting you know that a new carrier is there?
I believe it's within a month.
Okay, very good.
And they, they actually provide a, a monthly report to, to show activity on the tower, income on, you know, what the carriers, et cetera.
Is there a pre-installation piece, meaning they have to let you know that it's coming and then when it's finished?
Yes, in fact, that's what triggers the option and lease agreement.
Very good.
Is the first of those. And I think there's a signing bonus for one thousand for executing the initial marketing agreement. There's another five hundred dollar bonus to the district for, uh, the, the option and lease execution. So there's, and then there's a one-time twenty thousand dollar bonus, the first time a carrier lands on the tower, if you saw that in the document. So there are some financial incentives built in for the district. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, was it is an exclusive agreement, so as such, it does require board approval. I'm sure we would come to you with this anyway, but because it's exclusive, that is required, uh, by board policy. So that governs, uh, or covers the high points of the agreement, and I'm happy to entertain questions or anything else.
We may have some more, but let's get a motion on the floor first and then we can, um, so team, what do you say?
I make a motion to approve the master marketing agreement for Arcadia Infrastructure LLC as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Um, I do have a question. So it can be at any of the district properties potentially? Or were there, there's three, yes?
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Great question. I should've covered that, I appreciate that.
No, that's.
It's on page eleven, exhibit A.
Yeah.
So it's the early childhood central campus, and that's the current site, not the future site, so that's in Green Hills.
Mhm.
Um, intermediate school at South Campus, so that's this campus, and then the high school at North Campus, so that's on Kemper Road.
So where exactly, for example, if it was on this campus, where would it be located?
We don't know yet. They have to test.
That's what.
Yeah, okay.
But one condition we would put in is the FCC advisory to keep at least a hundred meters from the building.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. If we would have any say-so about, you know, obviously, right in the middle of the parking lot wouldn't be a good place, but, um.
Now, it's a thirty acre site here, so we've got room to get it out in the way. And there's a cellular dead zone in this area, so we also don't have the best cell signal in this building sometimes.
That's true.
We have radio repeaters in here to be sure that. We have radio repeaters in here to be sure that our emergency communications work with our handheld radios and our digital communications.
So, they would actually do hotspots to determine where the best location would be?
Yes, sir. Yep, heat mapping, they call it. Yes, sir. You're right.
Just a question about how they look. What do these towers look like? Are they, like, how tall?
Well, there are stealth towers even. I don't know if you've heard about this, but there's some that look like trees.
Okay.
But, but it depends on what they're trying to do with the coverage area. So, if they've got a dead zone, how tall does it need to be to fill in the hole, so to speak?
Sure. Like, is it as tall as Mobilecom or that Star Sixty-four? We're not talking about those giant, we don't know.
I hesitate to answer, Ms. Kuhn. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be evasive. I just don't know.
No, I was just curious.
It could be, but it's not likely.
But we would be approving that.
Yes.
Before they were built, or is this their approval to build?
This is their approval to market.
Market, okay.
And then there's another step about the actual.
The option and lease agreement.
Okay.
Yep. It's not executed.
And that would come back to the board again.
Correct.
I think it's, it's, the community always wants us to look for different ways we can incorporate revenue streams, and obviously, the board wants to be cognizant of how it affects and impacts our neighbors, and we want to make sure we can satisfy, if there is a demand for cell service and we can improve the quality of the community, that's important. So, those are great things. I just wanted to make sure, since some of these are unknown, it's kind of good to have some ability to, you know, we don't want to sign something blindly and not know what we're gonna get. So, I think that's important, that we have that say-so later.
Absolutely.
But it is a great opportunity. It's very exciting.
Yeah, what, I think what you're agreeing to today is for them to at least move forward and explore, not to commit, that you're not, they're not saying the tower starts tomorrow.
Well, because my question would be too, like, how far away, far away from the school building, but then from people's homes, are we gonna get, like, kicked back, like, oh, close to my house or something, you know, so that, you don't know that. That's a question you would know.
Right, it's a great question. So, this, this company is not, like, this is not their first rodeo. So, they would actually survey and look at everything, and then, you know, we come back to the board to say, hey, here's some potentials. What's your, what's your appetite?
Right, they're responsible for, like, the zoning permits.
Correct.
Everything, yes.
All that stuff is in place before.
Yes.
We may be responsible for the easement part of it, of keeping the area mode around, something like that, which we already would do.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? No? Seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Denny.
Thank you, board.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And, let's see, so, take my notes, make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
Personnel schedules.
No.
Just personnel schedules.
So, we just concluded several of them all at one time. We'll move on to superintendent's recommendations, ten point zero one.
Ten point zero one. We had a situation where the girls' softball team was not going to get a chance to participate today, even though they were all dressed in uniformed. Two of the coaches are out ill, and then we remembered that Ms. Wilson is actually a coach, so she is actually coaching the team today. So, wish her good luck. Hopefully, there's a victory. And, you know, having people that can be versatile in a pinch is to our advantage, so we'll see. So, I am your guy for today with the schedules. So, the recommendation is to approve Schedule A, resignations as well as retirements. The next one is personnel employment B, personal employment, support staff C, person, certificated staff and uncertificated staff D, and finally, leaves E. So, board, the recommendation is to approve Schedule A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, board, take a motion, and we can start the process.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel's schedules as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded by Ms. Bryant. Questions, discussions? Seeing none, I'm gonna assume. Go ahead, and Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to resolu, well, ten point zero two, which is a resolution for the National Teacher Association Week.
Mr. Smith? So, the recommendations to approve the resolution, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May first through the fifth, and I'm sure Dr. Johnson will be reading this resolution.
So ready. This is a resolution for National Teachers Appreciation Week, May the first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the week of May first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, is National Teachers Appreciation Week, and whereas the public schools have been a gateway to success for every generation of Americans, and whereas a strong effective system of public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas public schools are at work shaping the future for the whole new generation of young Americans who will take their places in education, business, industry, and government, and whereas no other profession has so great an opportunity to make a lasting, life-changing impact on the lives of so many, and whereas teachers empower, inform, teach, enlighten, share, enrich, create, motivate, mentor, and touch the minds of those students they are entrusted with, and whereas it is appropriate for the Wintonwood City School District to pay tribute to the teaching profession as a whole, and to recognize teachers for their dedication and for their commitment to challenge and educate the youth of our school and community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wintonwood City School Board of Education formally designates the week of May first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Very nice. Board, there would be a motion on the floor?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for National Teacher Appreciation Week, May first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussions? I think Dr. Johnson said it all. We are very appreciative of our teachers. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. On to ten point zero three. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President, I, I'm going to go out on a limb and work with Ms. Bryant, because I'm a little bit, I'm struggling with Nurses Day and Teachers Week. So, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to, you know, whoever we have to petition to, because our nurses got us through COVID.
Yes.
All right. So, it should be, you know, Nurses Year, or something like that.
I expanded it to actually Nurses Month.
Absolutely.
It really, true story.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know. So, at this point, you let me know where we need to, you know, strike our oars, and I will be rolling with you. Okay?
It's collaborative effort.
So, the recommendations to approve the resolution for National School Nurses.
Month, year.
The month of May.
Yeah, month of May.
So, would you like to read the resolution?
I sure would.
Thank you.
Resolution, National School Nurses Day, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas it is proper to acknowledge school nurses for their professional contribution to encourage and support a healthy environment and education for our nation's youth and for the students and staff of the Wintonwood City School District, and whereas school nurses provide a vital role to the institution of public education through their unique expertise for managing primary and preventive health care, and whereas school nurses are diligent, motivated, caring professionals who influence and promote a healthy school environment that is safe and conducive to learning. Be it therefore resolved this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three, that the Wintonwood City School District Board of Education hereby recognizes the continued effort, commitment, and resolve of school nurses to make a difference, and proclaims May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as National School Nurses Day, and the Wintonwood City School District, adopted this day, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Board, there's a motion in order?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution for National School Nurses Day, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any comments? Thank you to our nurses. That's important.
It is.
Mr. Seymour, if you'd like to call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. On to Agenda ten point zero four.
The School Nutrition Employee Week Official Proclamation. The goal is to approve the resolution for School Nutrition Employee Week, May first through the fifth.
And with that, Mr. Birdie?
I will read that.
Mm-hmm.
School Nutrition Employee Week Official Proclamation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district's schools' meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of May first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, is School Nutrition Employee Week, now therefore be it resolved that Wintonwood City School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children, adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Birdie. A motion, board?
And I will make a motion to approve the resolution, School Nutrition Employee Week, May first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any comments? And again, thank you to our nutrition team. Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Sure. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. On to ten point zero five, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President and board, the recommendation is to approve the resolution for School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, May first, two thousand twenty-three.
And by process of elimination, that would be me reading this. School Bus Driver Appreciation Day Official Proclamation. Whereas the Wintonwood City Schools Board of Education, in recognition of school bus drivers, declares May first, two thousand twenty-three, as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and whereas this is a day to officially acknowledge and express appreciation to school bus drivers throughout the state of Ohio for their continued excellence and dedication to the safe transportation of school pupils, and whereas the Wintonwood City School Board of Education has the utmost respect and admiration for school bus drivers and transportation employees who have dedicated their lives and their talents to our children, who are truly our community's most precious and important resource, whereas the board acknowledges the vital role they play in achieving the mission of the Wintonwood City School District, to be a quality education system, providing the opportunity for all students to reach their potential in mind, body, and spirit, and whereas the board recognizes that school bus drivers within the Wintonwood City School District are among the best in the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wintonwood City School District does hereby extend its sincere appreciation to Wintonwood City School District bus drivers and transportation department employees who contribute to making our schools successful, adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. And with that, a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, May first, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
I'll, go ahead, Deborah.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Deborah.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned by Ms. Bryant, and so it's motioned and seconded. I enjoyed reading that. Had a lot of really good points in there. Thank you to our students and our transportation. I enjoyed reading it. Thank you. With that, Mr. Seymour, would you call?
Mr. Denny was gonna show us a graph, but we'll save that till next time.
That's the graph? What?
No kidding.
Mr. Seymour, has called the vote?
Absolutely.
Oh, how much?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our next agenda, which is Board of Education Reports.
No.
Ten point zero eight.
Second reads.
Yeah.
Oh, I jumped over those. I did not. I went out of my little protocol. So, we have second reads, sorry. So, we'll move on to our second read, ten point zero eight. Thank you for the correction. Yes, whenever you are, sir.
All right. To approve the second reads, revised board policies as presented. This is a legal citation change, seventy-four forty point zero three, property, small unmanned aircraft systems, seventy-four forty, property facility security, policy eighty-two ten, school calendar, eighty-three twenty, personnel files, eighty-three thirty, student records, and finally, revised policy eighty-six hundred, operations regarding transportation.
Thank you. A board, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the second read of the revised board policies as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any conversation, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now, on to.
Ms. Kuhn? One thing that I do want to mention, some of these small unmanned aircraft systems have been involved in legal conversations where people have used them to scout other teams. So, that's one of the major issues. The Ohio High School Athletic Association saying that, do not let this happen.
So, what do they?
They use the.
Use a drone to scout other football teams or whatever, as far as what.
To look at plays and whatever, yeah.
I did not know that.
Absolutely. We don't, but we have seen drones from time to time.
So, how do they catch them?
How do they catch the drone?
Yeah. I mean, that's maybe not part of this policy, but.
Well, I think what, what, what people have done is they've figured out every drone has a sort of like a little ID connected to it, and I think they can zoom in and take a picture, and then they can identify. Yeah.
Well, that's interesting. So, we will move on to our Board of Education Reports, and we'll move to our legislative report. And Dr. Johnson?
Yes, Madam President, I did send this out to the board members, to Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour. There are five areas that I'd like to highlight tonight with respect to the legislative report from last month to this time. The first one is, there was a suggestion for the rescue officers subsidiary proposal, and it was that Governor Mike Dewine had planned to spend nearly four hundred million dollars over the upcoming biennium to help schools post law enforcement officers in their buildings as attracted. It's attracted some, a lot of comments and recommendations. I'd just like, as a sidebar, to say, there's a couple of years ago, Mr. Smith did in one of his State of the Schools address, talked about a resource officers and needing them for our new buildings, well before this was being talked about, and this is because it's become a national issue, that he was already above and forward-thinking about this issue before it even hit the state, and everybody's like, oh, now we need help with this. You were already talking with Green Hills and Forest Park Police to figure out how to make that happen. So, we appreciate your efforts there, because now that there's been so, you know, I think one of your comments at the time, and this is really a sidebar, but one of your comments at the time was, nobody will think it's an emergency until something happens. And now that you start to see these things happening in various schools, now it's a topic of conversation in the state of Ohio and in other states as well, but that our superintendent had already been thinking about this prior to anything happening. So, it is something that's a hot topic right now in the state of Ohio, not just in the state of Ohio, across the nation. The second item was that proponents had pitched, and this is a tender subject, the transgender sports ban as a fairness issue, and just to highlight some of the talking points, some of the backers of the proposal wanted to prevent the transgender girls from playing on sports teams that consisted with their gender identity, and they told the House Panel that a ban is needed to protect the integrity of women's sports. It was also stated that biological sex indisputably was the biggest driver of athletic advantage, which explains the need for House Bill Six, which talks about school athletics, to enact and save Women's Sports Act to require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to designate separate same, single-sex teams and sports for each sex. The last point is. The last point is that it was a reference to Title IX and how that it was put in place because it was stated that, on average, males are bigger, faster, and stronger than females, and that this did not mean that women were any less than men. It simply means that they were different and that men and women are different, and that these differences should not be overlooked because it's likely that women's sports would suffer. And while it is a tender subject, we have to stay tuned. There's still continuation as far as talks on that. You want to add anything?
And Dr. Johnson, it goes a little further. Even with the uniforms that young women wear. Many of the uniforms were actually uniforms that were passed down from varsity sports of males that didn't fit right, that weren't tapered right. And I think so it goes beyond the scope of the competition. It's the whole attitude, that's why Title IX exists.
Yep. Okay, the next area that I want to highlight is that the lawmakers are now stressing the need for innovation in K-12 transportation policies. We just honored our bus drivers. But it just really goes to speak, I really do believe, how that our superintendent has been, you know, a little bit, I don't know if he had a crystal ball or something, but he's been a little bit ahead of the fray with bringing these things to our forefront. But legislators are now looking at how they're going to budget as a vehicle for policies aimed at easing the bus problems for students because we've had problems within our district for busing and we, you know, did the call center and we've made some various changes. But this is a statewide issue, and I would even venture to say, a, you know, a national issue. So now our state lawmakers are saying, let's look at it. But again, we were already looking at it.
The other two good parts is, you know, being able to collaborate with Mr. Denny and Mr. Seymour to use Escher funds to purchase vans actually made our life a lot easier to deal with. Because, you know, our girl softball team, our middle school girl softball team is actually transported by van today because we couldn't get bus drivers because they're running their routes. So the more participation that you have in activities, the more it kind of challenges you to run those routes in the afternoon because the drivers are already engaged with our regular students who have to get home, so...
Well, and the other thing is it's a lot cheaper to run a van than to run the whole bus anyway.
Absolutely, it is.
You know, so, I mean, my point is that you guys had already began to think about those things, you know, prior to now, you know, the state lawmakers are looking at it. The fourth item that I highlighted here...
Was Mrs. Wilson driving the van?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Wilson was driving the van?
Absolutely. I say we use you as many times as we can, sir. I mean, that's just...
I thought that might be...
Yeah, yeah, she is driving the van, along with Ms. Roselle.
Okay, all right. Well, we have people who wear mini hats in this district. The fourth thing that I highlighted was the reading retention policy is back at the House again. Last month, we talked about how they were, Governor Dewine was looking at changing the reading to science of reading. And now what the House is looking at, because that was in the forefront. They're pushing back at the practice of automatically retaining students who failed to reach the required benchmark on the state's third grade English Language Arts exam. And the substitute version of the state operating budget was House Bill 33, which was adopted in the House Finance Committee, including the language eliminating that key feature of the state's third grade reading guarantee law. And it was stated that every student in Ohio learns in a different way, and removing the high-stakes nature of the third grade ELA will allow teachers more time to provide intervention to students relating to literacy, and that reading interventions are an integral part of the Ohio Third Grade Reading Guarantee Law. Again, stay tuned, this will continue. It's not been, you know, settled yet, it's just back. And it's on the floor because of the other reading program that was talked about last month. The fifth thing that I highlighted here was the K-12 Safety Bill. And it's new, and what it's gonna do, it's talking about the prevention of services in nearly all of the schools in Ohio. And basically, the proposal in the Senate aims to ensure that Ohio school buildings meet state safety standards after some of the issues that were going on in other states. The proposal falls under the Childhood Safety Act, and it is a critical way to do something that keeps the attacker from getting inside of the school building or into the classroom. They're looking at door assemblies in the K-12 buildings, the type of glass that's in the, you know, windows, like the out, exterior doors. They're looking to prevent injury or death for fires, school shootings, other emergencies, and that measures would be a mandate that would regulate inspections from time to time on maintenance to ensure that the equipment was all working properly. And with our new buildings, I'm thinking some of that was already taken care of. There are some bills that are being introduced, and I'll just highlight the title of those, and you guys have this in your email. There's a House Bill 135, which is, talks about school attendance and giving students participation, time off to participate in 4H and FFA Clubs, Future Farmers of America Club. The House Bill 139, which is the Sports Officials, which talks about if there is, there was an increase in assault of the referees and fighting at the games. So if there is assault of a victim is acting in a sport, towards a sports official, then, or retaliation of some type, they're looking at what will be done and what the ruling will be done with that. Also, again, House Bill 140, school buses. There are people who are still passing the school buses when the lights are flashing. So they're saying, what do we do about those people besides just writing them a ticket? So in the Senate Bill 99, School Action, which would require public and charter non-public schools to create a seizure action policy for students who have seizure disorders. And then there's other, I actually gave you all a copy of the tracking status report that goes along. So the ones that are, you know, like continuing, all of them. But these are the ones that I just looked at and said, you know what? As an educator, I would want to know about these coming down the pike. So that concludes my legislative report at this time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate the information on that. Moving to Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report, Mr. Brody?
I did send out my normal report to everybody with the documents that I pretty much do every week. There are a couple of things going on. We have the graduation ceremonies, or the senior ceremonies, coming up in May. Mr. Smith, I think you probably get invited to the Scarlet Oaks...
Yes, sir.
...one, so if you don't get that, let me know.
It just conflicts with our thing every year.
Yeah, I know. Well, this one's on the 22nd. It's a Monday.
I'll find out.
May 22nd.
Okay.
At Fifth Third Arena at 7 o'clock. So it's down there. And then we had two students, keeping with our theme of wanting to recognize achievements from Winton Woods students. We have two students, Brooklyn Rainey, who is in the Scarlet Oaks Veterinary Assisting Program, and she passed her veterinary assisting certification.
Bravo.
And a Javi Rios Fontanaz, who is also in the Scarlet Oaks Veterinary Assisting Program, and she passed her veterinary assisting certification. So we want to congratulate them and wish them well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brody. I did want to, we're moving on to 12.01, Board Motions and Recommendations. My recommendation for my board is that, I'm gonna challenge us, I'm going to say I want to accomplish our handbook in the next 60 days. That's my goal as a team. I want to challenge us to keep learning and growing and become better boardsmen. With our district, I think it's really important. It helps you become more engaged with what the work is and assist our superintendent or our treasurer in the work. Because it's really important, that handbook in particular, because the Winton Woods City School Board is an ongoing entity, but its members do, are not, we'll say. They're, we had a training, and again, just so the public knows that the Board does take this work very seriously, we had a retreat and we had an OSBA representative come down and do some additional training with us on a Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. So I appreciate my colleagues and our superintendent and treasurer for taking time out to take that...
Madam President, 9:00 to 12.
9:00 to 12.
Huh?
9:00 to 12.
Oh, what time did I say?
11:00.
I went to 12?
Yeah, that hour made a difference.
Oh, yes, it went to 12, 9:00 to 12. I don't know where 11:00 came from. I think that last hour was so fast, I just whizzed right by. But I want, I want our district to know that our community members take this role very seriously. We work really hard to achieve, to give our students the mission, which is that opportunity to reach their fullest maximum potential. So that's my challenge to my boardmates, my colleagues. And there's also additional training that you can take and we can continue to learn and grow as a team. So that's really important, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. We'll move on to 13.01, which is comments from my teammates. And we'll see, and I'll start with this treasurer because he's really fast to go through his comments. Okay.
Then you can move on quickly.
Well, there's a method to the, to the order, maybe. Mr. Smith?
I'm just, Ms. Kuhn and Board, I am just totally excited that Miami Regional moved our kids up at the top for that early childhood, I mean, early college academy. That is absolutely wonderful. And our goal is to have more kids involved in it. So we'll be monitoring them very, very carefully. I know Ms. Amber Strozer will have her arms around them, making sure that all the projects, all the classes, everything is in attendance. But I think the best part of it is, most of the kids that are part of the early childhood, I mean, early college academy, I don't know why I keep saying early childhood. But they get to participate in their, in their home activities. They still can be part of the band and part of the choir and part of the football team. So it's not creating this whole thing where they're away from their peers the whole day. They get a chance to reunite and reconnect, which I think makes it absolutely incredible. So kudos to all the young people that are there, making it. And there'll be that graduation ceremony very soon, where the kids will have an associate and a diploma. That's huge.
That's exciting, thank you.
We're the only district right now in Hamilton County that's participating in this endeavor.
You should say that one more time.
The only district in Hamilton County. There are some schools in Butler County, but Hamilton County.
Good, that's awesome.
I will invite Dr. Dourget to everything that I do, every single time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo Mr. Smith on the Miami University Early College Academy. It, I teach at a two-year school, and it's really phenomenal when you see them walk across the stage with their high school diploma and their college two-year. And it saves parents tons of money, it really does. So congratulations to the, those students who wanted to participate in that program. And I encourage more parents to encourage their students to take part in a program such as that. Thank you to all of our, our community members who pour into our students in our district and to our teachers. Teachers' appreciation, nurses' appreciation, school nutrition and bus driver appreciation. We just really don't say thank you enough, we can't say thank you enough, but we do appreciate what you do, so that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant?
I was expecting more, I'm like, hey, I'm still getting my thoughts together, Dr. Johnson. No, I echo what Mr. Superintendent Smith and Dr. Johnson said. Congratulations to all that were honored. Congratulations Officer Veda Harris. He finally was able to get his just due, so we appreciate all the hard work that you do. I echo your sentiments, Dr. Johnson, with the need and the forethought of the superintendent and all of the people that every day show up for the kids.
Ms. Bryant, I did tell, you have to figure out the reason that Officer Harris came. I told him he was not an official officer until he came to get this award. We challenged the status, so...
That's it, I love it.
We put on desk duty, so he showed up.
Appreciate that. Congratulations to all those who were honored, and again echoing the sentiments from everyone about the Miami University Early College Academy students. That is phenomenal. I'm just super excited that we are the only school in Hamilton County to offer such a wonderful educational opportunity. Thank you to our public comment speaker, what she had to say about her daughter's experiences and the differences. And it's a challenge accepted, Paula, to learn more and to do more, to make sure that every child that's in this district has the same or equal opportunities based on their ability. So we'll definitely be making sure that we make those improvements as necessary. Again, to every, to our teachers, to our school nurses, to our nutrition employees, to our school bus drivers, this work could not be done if it weren't for you all. That you show up every day to pour into children every way. And there's not one job that's more important. Although I'm a nurse, and I think nursing is the best profession ever, every profession. I would not be here if it weren't for the teachers who taught me from elementary school to college. I couldn't have survived if it weren't for the bus drivers who got me to where I needed to go, to the nutrition employees who poured into me. So it takes every single one of us to do this work, and I appreciate all of you all for showing up. And if you know anyone that would like to do any of the work or openings that we have, please, log on, apply, we'd love to have you. So, thank you.
Very, good plug, very good. I wanted to, I'm glad some, everyone, you said many of the things I wanted to say. I wanted to express the appreciation to all of our employees. I won't say it again, but it doesn't mean I don't appreciate you. But I do want to put a shout out for our music, our fine arts program. We're awarded NAMM certification again this year. That's, I don't know, I've lost count, so, and I know how to count more than 10, but I think it might be close to 10, maybe, years since we've been awarded that. And it's, there's 803 districts throughout the United States that are awarded this, and it's very prestigious. And Winton Woods does recognize the value and the hard work of our fine arts program. I think it's recognized by our community, and we want to keep that excellence going. So I want to appreciate our music department and the fine arts department for completing that and having that honor again. The other kind of highlight with that, the school musical, the Addams Family School Edition. Oh my gosh, I had so much fun, it was the best show. They should take it on the road, I don't know if they got an off-broadway production going on or anything. But the experiences from the acting, the singing, the choreography, they did great choreography. The property managers, the people that run, it's a student-run event. So they're doing everything from the lighting, the production. They're learning a lot of really integral skill sets that are gonna be very powerful for them as they grow up, no matter what career they choose. But I had fun, and my husband actually enjoyed it too, so...
But, Ms. Kuhn, did you notice the diversity on stage?
Oh, it was so much fun.
Absolutely.
It was, it was, I mean, and after a while, you just see the characters. What I love about any kind of theater or any kind of production is, you get, you see, you don't see the person, you see the character, they become the character. So that was fun for me, I enjoyed that a lot. The other thing is, that we talked, that's very important, is with all these curricular and co-curricular programs that the district does put together, it's really, really integral to the success. We see it presented here every month, and that's important. And, but those aren't free. I wish there was a Money Tree, if Mr. Denny can, you know, make an agreement with some Money Tree tower place, you know, that would be really nice. But these things...
Next month.
Next month, that would be, that would be really, or a Golden Goose, you have a Golden Goose somewhere we can look for. But I want our community to know that these are really powerful pieces that the district puts in place and to wisely use our resources so that it benefits the community and our children. And it benefits them tremendously. So, and Mr. Smith and I did a podcast on Waycross, so one of the things, we wanted to reach out and make sure the community knows what's going on in your schools. And people here see it every day, the Board, we don't see it as much as our colleagues do that are in the schools, but that's an important piece, and it's our job to relay what's going on to the schools, to our community, so they can see the work and know that it's done, done well. And we always want to keep getting better, I'm not saying we're perfect by any means, but we always want to strive for greater and greater excellence. So with that, I will end my comments. Pardon? You have a comment? Did I not skip?
Yeah.
Did I skip?
You did.
I normally don't have much to say. You always, you always throw off because he gives us a Great Oaks report last, and then you bring him back again.
It's like, it's like I did mine.
Right.
Yeah, that's why, I know that's why. I only got a couple of things I'll say. I do echo everything...
No, you can say as much as you want to.
If you're done, are you done?
I don't, apparently I am.[1552.21][1552.21][laughter]
I do echo everybody else's comments about, you know, the events tonight and that. I do want to say one thing, I, Dr. Johnson received recognition at the Ohio Southwest Region School Board meeting for ten years of service as a school board member. And I handed her her certificate at the board retreat, and I, afterwards, when I got home, I'm like, you know what, I should have done that at the board. So I'm sorry, but congratulations and thank you for, thank you for your service. And then just a reminder for everybody, graduation, May eighteenth, seven-thirty, Cintas Center in Xavier. Six o'clock. Okay, six o'clock for board members, but the ceremony starts at seven-thirty. Okay, that's all for me. Is that right, Ms. Strozer?
Yes.
True. She's like...
Yeah, all students ignore what I said, listen to Ms. Strozer, Mr. Martin, and anybody else.
Any direction.
Yes, okay.
Yes. My apologies. I'm so sorry.
Paul, you know.
Oh, one other comment. The incredible ribbons that you guys will see on the fence going down Winton. It's been this great, Rogie Walmar and her team that's been doing it for years, and we have actually taken over the challenge. So it is actually the girls' middle school softball team that's creating the ribbons now.
Nice.
Yes, yes. So they took on a new challenge. They say we want a bigger challenge. They're going to actually be working with the, those seniors and making it a collaborative project.
Great. That's even better. That's that relationship into the community, so that's awesome. Thank you.
So Drew Jackson does have a challenge, and I think she'll rise to the occasion. We want to, so we've been doing these ribbons for years, right? But now Drew has said, Sue, I want to see the bodies that go to the ribbons. So what we're going to try to do is get all the kids in their cap and gowns to stand behind the ribbons to show this whole effect. So, thank you.
That's a good idea.
That is a challenge.[1677.83][1677.83][laughter]
Did you know that?
Give them a window of the time to come. Boy, that is a challenge.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, yeah.
I can tell you, just even, I think we said this last year about this time, those ribbons are so impactful.
Incredible.
I could not wait to pick up my kids' ribbons. It was like you drove down Winton Road very, very slowly, looking for your ribbon, and it was just that ounce of pride. So thank you for those who are creating them, and to the girl softball team for picking up that challenge and collaboration with the community members. It is a big win for our community to see that, as you go from one community into another community.
Yes, 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 yes.
So I think it's something that we all should be...
Round of applause for Drew Jackson. When they said they won't, would not be able to do it anymore, she was like, oh, no, no, that has to keep going.
Have they been here so we can officially honor them at a school board meeting?
Well, we've done it before, but they're, they're a little more seasoned, but we will, we offered to pick them up in the vans and bring them to any kind of event, but they're going to be out there working on the ribbons with the kids, so that's a good show.
I think that's phenomenal.
Yeah, maybe get some pictures of that, too. That would be cool. That would be awesome.
That's awesome. Thank you.
All right. I think, I didn't miss anybody.[1752.83][1752.83][laughter]
I'm sorry, Paul.
That's okay. I don't know that there's, is there a need for, there's no need for an executive session tonight? There is, there is need.
Is there a need? No, no.
There is no need for executive session. Okay. With that, I would like to thank Waycross Media, again, our partner in the community, and to our viewers, our big viewership out there. Thank you. I'd call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.